All right, so my clock has turned to seven o'clock PM. So that being true, I would like to call the Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022 Planning Board Meeting to Order. I would like to ask people in the audience to silence their cellphones and note that this meeting is being recorded. Karen, could you call the roll, please?
Bob Garde's absent. Jim Callian?
Here.
Kevin Donovan?
Yeah.
Dave Edmonds?
Yeah.
Carolyn Turner?
Here.
Mike Ventreska?
Absent.
Chair Claudia Bogan?
Here. First on the agenda under public hearings is a continued public hearing for the Legacy Lane subdivision. It's a modification request to retain the roadway as a private way to be maintained by the Private Homeowners Association rather than have the road become a public way maintained by the city. Before we begin, I'd like to say that Kevin Donovan had missed the February 8th meeting and has filed the appropriate certification to participate. Attermi Tarbi, welcome.
Yes, thank you. With me in the front row is Frank Mchenzie and his son Matthew Mchenzie. As you're aware, the Planning Board on November 15th of 2016 approved definitive subdivision plan entitled definitive subdivision plan Legacy Lane, Woburn, Massachusetts. And then subsequently in November, actually November 23rd of 2021, a request was filed to modify definitive subdivision plan to allow it to become a private way. So the applicant has made this request to make Legacy Lane a private way because the applicant and their three children are the only properties that will front on Legacy Lane. The applicant and their children through homeowners association have agreed to be responsible for the following items. Maintenance, repair, and replacement of the stormwater management components, the drainage system, the infiltration system, snow plowing, ice removal, sidewalks, streetlights, and repairs to the street itself and the sewer system and drainage system within. By assuming those responsibilities, there is a public benefit in that the costs of these will not be borne by the City of Woburn but borne by the HOA, which consists of the four property owners. In addition, the applicant will be responsible for installing signage as shown on the exhibit plan that we submitted prior to the last hearing that got continued. The applicant is in agreement with the planning director's request that all such signage must be MUTC compliant and be reviewed by the city engineer prior to being installed to ensure it complies, they comply. So that's hit on the request to modify the subdivision. We also filed a request to allow for May 1st, 2023 completion date of the subdivision with the outstanding item left being the restoration of Middle Street in accordance with DPW guidelines that work will be completed once paving resumes in the spring. And then just for the record, you know, there were memorandums or emails submitted back in December from engineering having no issue with the property becoming a private way and no official comment from Concom. And I couldn't locate the one from Jay Duran, but I think he's just concerned about the restoration work on Middle Street being completed and that, as I said, will be completed once the paving season begins.
All right. With that, I would like to formally call the, under subdivisions, Legacy Lane expiration of construction completion date. I would be happy to hear them both at once, Joe, since that is why you're here today. So with that said, the board members, do board members have any questions for the applicant? Jim, go right ahead.
Joe, can you explain to us how the homeowners association or the landowner owns to what portion of the street? Is it divided down the middle of the street like most private ways? How is that divided up? For instance, if the homeowners association dissolves for whatever reason, typically private ways are on the central line of the street.
Well, the homeowners association is a formal organization that homeowners will pay, you know, a monthly, you know, fee into it. If it were dissolved, and I can't see any reason why it would dissolve, the responsibility of that would fall on the individual homeowners.
And where is the delineation from Middle Street to Legacy Lane?
The delineation?
Yeah, well...
My question is for, the City of Woburn owns Middle Street. Legacy Lane is petitioning to be a private way. So typically, all services are rented to the property line. And that's what I'm looking to make sure is documented, that if it's going to be a private way, that from the city property line to the private, where it differentiates is where the homeowners association picks up all responsibility.
Yep, I would...
In large water main breaks, they don't call the city to go do it in the street right from the city line at Middle Street slash Legacy Lane would be the DMARC line.
Actually, to clarify, you bring up a very good point, Jim. There is an oddball, unusual layout to Middle Street where this subdivision road intersects it. There was a stubout. At one point, there was going to be a street that extended into the property that's since been developed for housing. But the layout remains, and it was one of the things we cited when we had the issue with some of the barriers. The city solicitor reminded me of the unusual layout, and it was because of that unusual layout that we were able to compel them to take the barriers down immediately because they were within what was the right-of-way of Middle Street. So it would have to be at a minimum, Jim, from where perhaps we could cite the city's GIS system that shows exactly where the Middle Street layout is and where the Legacy Lane would begin.
I think sheet two of the definitive subdivision plan, which was existing conditions, I think did show that area in question that you mentioned. And then the approved plan incorporates most of that within the subdivision way on sheet three.
So it sounds like we should be citing the layout of sheet three on the definitive, the approved definitive plan set.
I'm sorry, I'm having a difficult time with the math there.
I apologize.
No, no.
Let me make this a little easier for both of us. Are you suggesting then that we should be citing sheet three of the definitive plan set rather than the city's GIS? I know that it may show that way on one sheet of the subdivision plan, but that area was never given or sold to Mr. Mchenzie, so I'm thinking that maybe the GIS map would still be the one to use as a citation if you don't disagree.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, the GIS map, yeah.
Have we reached closure on that issue? Jim, are you set?
I'm set, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other board member that has questions for the applicant? So, Joe, the reason that this came perhaps to have more scrutiny than what a modification from a public way to a private way usually would have is the issue of the barriers that were erected in the roadway and the signage, which makes very clear what the developer and the residents want to happen to that street. That landscaping trucks or things of this nature, which cannot necessarily park safely on Middle Street to service their clientele, for example, would use this street. And the residents of this street are bothered by that. And that occasioned barriers put up in the roadway as well as signage that said, "No parking." And so when I'm evaluating this situation, I had frankly never given deep thought to what a private way versus a public way meant for public access. So that's why we asked the city solicitor to opine on these issues, which she has. And my sense, reading her answer, is that were we to grant the request, the developer/ residence of that street could almost with impunity put barriers or things of this nature up. And although there's a theoretical right for the city to intervene on this, it would be relatively difficult to do so. So that's one issue. The other issue that this brings up is that because the developer no longer owns the roadway, that if we were to try to make this a public way, were we to hold the developer to the plan, I do not believe that the developer and the city have the ability anymore without going through quite a large process of turning this actually into a public way due to the nature of the conveyancing. So it's interesting because there's reasons on one side to question what we're setting up here with the move to a private way. And then on the other side, the way the conveyancing has worked makes it difficult, if not impossible, to fully embrace a public way. And so that sort of leaves me, you know, wondering what the best course of action here is to take. And, you know, I'm just one member. I'm hoping that the members, and Mr. Ventreska has arrived.
I apologize, I'm sorry I'm late.
No worries.
I can't, I gotta abstain from this anyway because I've missed two public hearings.
Okay, no worries. But I'm hoping that the members can sort of jump in here and assist on the question of, we know that there is potentially an ongoing dispute. I won't maybe use the word dispute, an ongoing difference of opinion in the ability of residents who live near Legacy Lane to have their guests or their workers park on Legacy Lane because Middle Street is configured in such a way to make that a good idea or an idea someone would want. And I would anticipate, if we made this a private way, that we would continue to have friction over that issue. And so that's just looking into the future and seeing, you know, what's in front of us. And the question of which way to go on this is squarely currently in our laps. So with that said, is there any member that would like to jump into this conversation on the policy issue behind this request?
Okay, can I just make a couple more comments before you get into that?
Absolutely, Joe, go right ahead.
So in the city solicitor's February 8th memo, she talks about a way becoming public in one of three ways. One, by being laid out under the procedure that normally goes before the board. Second, a way can become public by prescription, that is, by the open and continuous use of the way by the traveling public or maintenance by the city of town for a period of 20 years. And third is by dedication, but that only applies to ways in existence prior to 1846. Given the fact that this is a cul-de-sac, I don't see the second option being realistic. In other words, there is to take it by prescription. If you had a through street, I think she mentions all the streets over the west side of Woburn that go from Lexington Street to Russell Street, never being accepted as public ways formally, but just by the travel and maintenance of those roadways, by prescription have become public ways. The other thing I want to comment on is that people have lived on Middle Street forever, and they've had contractors come to their homes, they've had visitors, they've had parties, they've had graduation parties, and they've always found a place to park. So it's not like the Mchenzies have now provided, you know, a parking lot for the neighbors along Middle Street. They do have an obligation, as you know, to keep open the emergency turnaround. We showed plans that were submitted last month that show no parking along Legacy Lane because as you saw with the pictures of those trucks, it really narrowed it down, made it difficult to pass and repass with those big vehicles parked in that cul-de-sac. So I just wanted to make those comments before you had a further discussion.
And, you know, looking at those pictures, it's certainly understandable why the residents, if faced with that over a long period of time, would not want it. What I'm getting at, though, is I see the residents wishing to either stop this sort of thing or enforce against it as an issue that goes on into the future. Okay?
And I also...
And so whether that's true or not, I'm happy to have a conversation, whether that is a potential, am I looking at this wrongly?
I think it was initially got blown out of proportion. We're talking about one resident. If you look at your butters list, there's many, many people on that butters list. You heard from one resident, is my understanding. And the thing got blown out of proportion. Once we indicated that, the reason why, we put them up and took them down, then that resident went away. We never heard from that resident again.
Well, be that as it may, the issue here for me to figure out how best to resolve this issue is to figure out, well, say this happens again in the future, say we say, okay, fine, this is a private way. You put signs up in conformance with the standards, or we approve the signs, one or the other, we haven't yet gotten to that level of detail. And say there continues to be a problem, parking. Somebody decides to continue to park despite the no signage, no parking signage. And now I wonder what happens next, right? Because it's not as if you can, I mean, enforce by towing it away. I mean, you're not the city, it's a private way, right? And so I guess I'm wondering what the next step is? And is that something that, knowing that that is a possibility, I can still say, on balance, this is better as a private way? You see my point? Or not? That's sort of the rub. Because I can see this conflict coming up again, and I can see it being resolved similarly with, you know, either barriers or some other, you know, creative way of stopping people from, you know, coming in. And like I said, it's interesting because in all the years I've sat on this board, I've never really thought this deeply about the difference between a public and private way. So that's, you know, the occasion, this is, you know, maybe unfortunately for your client, the occasion for this deep thinking.
Well, I've only been involved with the private way twice that I can remember. One was my office park, Unicorn Park Drive. That was a subdivision roadway laid out on a plan approved by the Planning Board but maintained privately by the property owner. The other was down on Cabot Road. As you go down Cabot Road, the road goes to the right towards Peak, Peterson Party Supply, and left towards the veterinarian hospital. We represented Mr. Trainer that owns the property to the right, and he was having a problem with tractor trailers, those, we've seen them all over the city, they work out of their trucks and they just park wherever they can park. So he called the police department. This goes back probably 10 years ago. And he said, "There's nothing we can do about it, but this is a private way, this section of Cabot Road. So if you post no parking signs, then we can come in and, you know, ticket the vehicles that are on the no parking area." And that's what happened, and then eventually went away and wasn't a problem. So that's, those are the only two experiences I've had with private ways.
So let me follow up on that. Say someone came in, say we said, okay, fine, here's your private way. And then somebody comes and parks consistently enough on this legacy lane, no parking situation, enough to cause the homeowners to be upset about it. What would they, what could they do? Could they call the police and say, ticket them? Could they tow the vehicle? Do you see, I'm just trying to get at, what are the potential other things that could happen other than putting up barriers?
You know, I guess it would be up to the police department if they wanted to tow the vehicle. They couldn't, you know, call Murray's Towing and ask them to tow the vehicles, they couldn't do that. The only one, in my opinion, that would have the authority to do that would be the police department.
So say I come into Unicorn Park Drive, and I'm certain, since I've never seen cars parked on the actual drive, right, to these office buildings. Say I decided, well, heck, I feel like parking here, and I just pull over and I park. And say there's a no parking sign, there probably is, and management of Unicorn Park sees my car there. They call the police and have me ticketed or towed? I guess I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out, you know, exactly what your options are.
No, they don't. They would, you know, leave a note on your car and ask you to call the management office, and the management office would explain there's no parking. The only time that they have an issue with that and they allow it out of goodwill is when there are hockey tournaments down at Stonem Arena, and, you know, there's vehicles parked, you know, halfway up the roadway, and they, you know, they don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
But if it was something in your situation, I've never seen them, you know, tow a vehicle like that. They would leave a note on your car and ask you to contact them and just tell you there's no parking.
Okay. So from the homeowner's point of view, I, or the Planning Board, we all say, okay, fine, here's your private way. And they're still aggrieved, shall we say, by people parking there. Their options, once the people are parked there, are few, essentially. And so that's where I sort of see, well, you know, the self-help comes into play. And then, you know, from a policy perspective, right, I have, as a Planning Board member, I say, okay, it's not a public way, it's a private way, so my concern for any way in the city is simply safety, right? That's my concern. Safe and convenient ways of travel or language to that effect. And so that's, you know, that's the decision. By making this a private way, am I risking that there is unsafe and inconvenient travel or not? Is that enough of a risk to sort of wade into what will be a very onerous process to actually effectuate a public way? All right? So that's what's being weighed in my mind. So having said that, I dislike talking so much as chair. I will again throw it open to the members for comment. Please.
So obviously, safety is the only concern I have. And once they took those things out of the street, it was no different to me than any other short street where somebody may or may not park. Traffic's like water, you know how, rises, it falls. I wasn't there. I don't know why it got the dander up, but it did. And I'm going to assume that people are going to go in there, pull over their landscaping truck or their electrical truck or whatever it is, to go in and do whatever they do and then leave. And I don't think short of a gate at the front of the street, you're going to stop that. But I'm not sure that I think it's as big an imposition on the owners of the property as it's been made out to be. If it's a private way and people go in there, I think they'll get used to it. And if they don't, then they'll use the legal method of calling the police and letting them do whatever it is they do. I hate to think of having to believe, bring our overworked police out for something else. You know what I mean? It's, but if that's the outcome, that's the outcome. But I, you know, there's so many short streets in Woburn, come on, we know, we drive around, we see them, they're dead ends and they're short, and they work, right? It works. And this is more about an individual, the owners who don't like the look of it, I guess. And when I saw all the material, because I went through this all after the fact, you know, in order to be able to speak tonight, it looked to me they made the problem worse when they put that stuff in the street. And as a 50-year driver instructor remediation, the first thing that struck me was they created an unsafe situation. And they actually put themselves probably in some sort of legal jeopardy because if something had happened as a result of them doing that, I'm sure they would have been held accountable. So I thought they made a bona doing that because it, I thought it put them in a bad situation. Put up the signs and see what happens. But I think, let it be a private way, we save a lot of money as a city, and I don't think it's going to be as onerous a thing as people have made it out to be. It's just my feeling.
All right, Dave, thank you. Are you set? All right. Would anyone else like to comment? I'm good. All right. So that being said...
Chair, can I just make one other comment?
Yes.
Just to, you know, if you go back to the city solicitor's January 5th memo, she indicated that the board is authorized to impose conditions for approval of a subdivision so long as those conditions are related to the purposes for the subdivision control law, where the principal object of subdivision control is to ensure safe and sufficient access to the lots within the subdivision. The installation of utilities, provision of municipal services is within the board's authority to require if the roadway as approved remains safely accessible. Therefore, the placement or installation of barriers intended to impede such access may be prohibited. So you would have the right under, you know, say, you know, you go ahead and you approve this as a private way, that could be one of your conditions.
Okay, thank you. All right. That being said, this is a public hearing. At this point, I would ask if there was anyone in the audience that wished to speak, to come forward and state your name and address for the record. All right, I have not seen anyone come forward. So what is the will of the board? Would there be a motion to close the public hearing tonight or not?
I'd like to hear from the director.
Sure. A couple of things. To your earlier comment, Claudia, concern about the potential for friction in the future, I think it is worth noting that there was one participant from the neighborhood, excuse me, sorry, the cough's going to come at the wrong time. Her stated issue was in fact the look of the... Her stated issue was in fact the look of the barriers that had been there. In fact, in one point in the public hearing, she said, I don't even care about the signage. It was the look of the barriers. So I apologize. Once those barriers came down, she stopped attending these public hearings that we've not heard from her. So I'm not sure that parking was her motivator. Pardon me, it was obviously what motivated the Mischenzies to put up the signs, but I'm not sure that that was at the root of her issue. To the comment about conditions, I would recommend if the board does approve it, that we think about at least four of them. One is requiring the regulatory signage, as was shown on that draft ASBIL plan. It was dated October 20, October 19 of 20 and revised on January 18 of 21 and January 24 of 22. And that the text to the signs be MUTCD compliant and reviewed and approved by the engineering department before any of it is erected. A second condition would be that no barriers. Pardon me, no barriers or obstructions are, can be erected that restrict the width of the travel way known as legacy lane. That no other changes to the construction methods or features of legacy lane be changed without the board's prior approval. And then a fourth condition would be execution of the HOA documents that Attorney Tarby referenced that make the homeowners on legacy responsible for the maintenance and repair of the road and the utilities for the snow and ice removal in addition to the other obligations it already has. They are now, pardon me, at present required to maintain the drainage features that aren't in the roadway and the emergency turnaround. And then lastly, I think in a nod and a reference to Jim's earlier comment, that we'd want to be very specific, that the way that would remain a private way would be what is shown on the city's GIS maps as legacy lane versus the layout of Middle Street.
All right. I have four total conditions. The first one being the MUTCD signage. The second one being no barriers constructed. The third one being an execution of the HOA documents. And a fourth one being that the way that is shown on the city's GIS map is the one that is going to end up being private. Did I miss one?
Uh, no, the, the one about the barriers or obstructions would be expanded, wouldn't just be no barriers, obstructions erected that restrict the width of the travel way and that no other changes to construction features of legacy lane shall be made without the board's prior approval.
Okay. So I didn't. All right. So under those circumstances, the public hearing is still open. Would there be a motion to deal with that?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, there is a motion by Dave. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kevin. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I would call for a regular vote for the very first time in a very long time. So all in favor, please raise your hands. That's one, two, I'm sorry, three, four. All right, that would be five in favor to close the public hearing. The public hearing is closed. Tina, would that be your recommendation or do you have more to add?
That would be my recommendation.
All right. That being said, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to accept the planning board's recommendation by Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. So we have one, two, three, four, five in favor, none opposed. All right. Thank you, Attorney Tarby. Thank you, sir. We will then move to the second item on our agenda under public hearings. Public hearing continued. Roadway Improvement Plan, Village Street. Attorney Salvati, welcome to an in-person meeting.
It is wonderful to see everyone, or most of everyone.
May I ask for the vote on the legacy lane extension of the construction completion date? My apologies.
No, I'm not, I'm not sitting there.
You stay right there. Stay right there. So there was a request from the applicant to, to extend the construction completion date for the legacy lane subdivision from technically April 30, 2020 to May 1 of 2022. Engineering department is supportive of that request. The work that remains has to be done in the correct kind of weather, which is not now. And Mr. Mischenzi has indicated he can get that work done by May 1. So planning staff would recommend that the extension, the completion date be extended to May 1, 2022.
All right. That is a very limited extension and it strikes me there is very little work left outstanding. So that being the case, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I would call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two.
I can vote because this wasn't a public hearing, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes.
All right, that is six in favor. None opposed. All right. Now we are done with legacy lane. Mark, we have Village Street.
Village Street. So first I'd like to offer an apology on this particular petition. We have been delayed a couple of times already and we haven't really even discussed it yet. I am going to ask for another basically 30 days to be heard on March 22nd with the promise that there'll be some progress. We have met with Jay Duran, our engineers met with Jay Duran. I have met with the neighbors on, the two immediate neighbors that are most concerned about this and they are concerned to try to address their issues. But we did have some errors in the original filing plan, so I do apologize for that and Mr. Slager does as well. So that being said, there are a few things we're trying to work out with Mr. Duran. One is the turf that we've proposed as the turnaround. Another is the turnaround itself with the neighbors because their property actually extends somewhat into Village. And an issue about the private way, which I think we're going to have to talk to Alan about to a certain degree as to what can win the private way and what can't and who is to maintain it because we have a small retaining wall proposed. So without getting into too many more details, we are working on it and want to ask for March 22nd to be heard on this further.
All right. Is there any comment from the board members?
Just a question. Do you have to announce the public hearing first before we?
That would be, yeah, that would be my intention.
Okay.
So I'm happy to open the public hearing on Village Street. There, there is nobody in attendance for comment today. So I will not go through the formality of asking anyone who is present to speak. My understanding is that there were neighbors that wished to participate in this particular matter in person as opposed to Zoom, which is in part why, why we are here today in person. To my knowledge, that would still be true for March 22nd.
I hope so. I think they would want to participate in person.
And so then I would ask you, is March 22nd a doable date?
I believe it is. I think that we, we know what we have to do and if we can't do it, we'll withdraw. So I think it's all or nothing come March 22nd.
All right. Okay. So, so that being said, does anyone have any comments for the petitioner? All right, before we move on this, Tina, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, Mark and I had a nice, long discussion today. We covered a lot of ground and got a lot of clarity on what needs to be done and Mark's already take, took steps later today to do that. So I'm supportive of the notion of continuing the hearing to March 22nd. And if time and weather allows to have that meeting in person, I realize we will have that discussion later, but I would be supportive of the hearing being continued to 7 o'clock on Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022.
All right. Thank you for the recommendation. Is there any further discussion on this public hearing? If not, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to March 22nd, 2022 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Dave, second by Carolyn. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, none opposed. That motion carries. We, we will see this matter again on the 22nd of March. Thank you. Under subdivisions, having taken care of legacy lane, the next one is Robertson Way. Expiration of construction completion date. Brian Malanson.
Again, Attorney Salvati for Mr. Malanson. We did speak with Tina again about that today and unfortunately what, the only thing we really need is a certification from the engineer that it's been built per the plan, which we do not have yet. I know Mr. Slager has had some medical issues and other delays, but we had said we would have it for this meeting, but we don't. So I guess I'd be looking for 30 days for that as well, if that's okay with the board.
All right. So that would be a March, what's 30 days?
Well, 22nd.
March 31st or so?
Well, what we should do is we should set it for March 21st. And that way, if we meet on March 22nd and the board is unhappy, you could theoretically move on something. Yeah. So I would recommend a continuance of the, of the completion date for Robertson to March 21st, 2022.
And again, there is a relatively little left. It is simply the, the delay involved in an engineering certification. Is that right?
Actually, the ASBIL is done. And so it's just a certification of the ASBIL than it is ASBIL.
Well, and the ASBIL was done and was submitted in draft form and engineering reviewed it and had some edits. So I want to give Mr. Malanson credit. He did submit one, but then there were revisions that needed to be made. And so we're looking for the revised plan now and the certification.
Okay, I'll make sure we have that.
Okay.
All right.
So that being said, if there is no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to continue to the March 21st, 2022 meeting?
So you would, so the motion would be to extend the time to complete the subdivision to March 21st, 2022?
Correct.
Okay. That is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. And there is a second on the motion. And at this point, all in favor. One, two, three, four, six in favor. Six in favor, none opposed.
Thank you.
It's late. Thank you, Mark. I appreciate it. All right, next, under subdivisions is Allen R. Garrish Drive. Expiration of construction completion date, Cattle Crossing LLC. Tina, what do we have on this?
So what we have here is a, a recommendation that we extend the completion date to May 15th of 2022. We received a letter from Mr. Hearn. You might remember there was a, engineering had noted that there was a street light that had not been installed and we considered for a little while whether or not the existing lighting was sufficient. It was determined that it was not. So we notified him that he is going to need to put up a light. He has contacted EverSource. I didn't check with him today to find out if he's heard back from them, but he was checking with them to make sure or to see whether he could put a, another light on an existing hole. Beyond the light is preparation of the final ASBILs and acceptance plans, which he indicates are about 90% complete, but he can't finish them until he puts in, he needs to install some fencing with respect to his Concom order of conditions and that needs to be shown on the ASBIL. So until he can install the fence, he can't finish the ASBIL. And that work really needs to take place later on when the weather isn't frozen. So it'll be a couple of months. So based largely on the fact that the fence can't be installed until the frost leaves the ground and the plant can't follow until then, staff is supportive of the notion of continuing the completion date to May 15th, 2022.
All right. Thank you. If there is no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Just to the chair.
Yes.
I had recused myself as an abutter, so I'll be abstaining.
All right. All right. Any further discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to continue the completion date to May 15th, 2022?
All right, there is a motion to extend the completion date to May 15th, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, second by Mike. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor. One, two, three, four, four in favor or five in favor? None opposed. Motion carries and one abstention. Thank you. Thank you for helping.
I believe no.
All right. And then we have after the planning board director update. Why don't we do the planning board director update and then on to the fifth item? How about that?
Sure. Three things or two things to let you know about your next meeting, which is scheduled for March 8th. We'll need to decide whether to have that virtual or in person. Right now, what we have on the agenda are two matters or three potential matters. One is the Russo Estates subdivision. The completion date expires at the end of this month and we are awaiting approval of, they submitted ASBILs and acceptance plans, both of which were found to be lacking. And they are hopefully working on the revisions that are needed and they need to submit an engineer's certification as well. So Russo Estates will be on the agenda. So will fees. I know I have promised that in the last few meetings, but I think the March 8th meeting would be a perfect time, given the relatively small agenda. That would be a great discussion item for that meeting. And then lastly, potentially on the 8th will be a discussion of the Housing Choice Act. You remember I mentioned this at the last meeting, that there was a new law passed that was going to have some impact on the city of Woburn. And since that meeting, the mayor has communicated with the city council and they have given us some time on their March 1st agenda to make a presentation of some of the facts. And here's some of their input. I'll be inviting the board members to attend if they'd like to and I'll post it as a special meeting in case more than three of you want to attend. I'll also send you in advance some information. I got a great copy of a presentation that was made, made by the Mass Municipal Law Association, Lawyers Association, which is really pretty good about explaining not only the law, but as the draft regulations now sit, what some of those implications are. So you may want to have some discussion, follow-up discussion on that on your May 8th meeting if you attend the meeting on March 1st. The March 8th meeting, if you attend on March 1st. So those would be the three items for the next meeting on March 8th. And as I said, we should decide whether those items require an in-person meeting or whether it should be virtual.
Okay. The idea of continuing a hybrid model where when it appears appropriate and necessary and convenient for both the public and the board members to meet in person, that we do so. And when it appears that a meeting can be successfully held virtually, which would certainly be a convenience to the board members, but also perhaps public input who might decide not to come see us in person, but who would want to have a Zoom conversation with us. I would wonder if the next meeting is an appropriate virtual one in order to continue a hybrid experiment for our meetings. So anybody would like to jump in on that? I'd appreciate it.
I'll throw one quick thing in. The law, the city solicitor recently informed us that the authorization to meet virtually has been extended by the legislature now through July 15th. There are several bills pending at the state that would actually make virtual meetings permanently okay, I guess by technically exempting them from the open meeting law or some aspect. So she's vowed to keep me informed as things might change, but right now we could do hybrids if we chose through July 15th, I think it is.
All right, Jim, I saw your hand raised.
I'd like to propose the March 1st or next meeting, April, uh, meeting be hybrid.
You mean a virtual?
Yes, yeah.
I'm not sure we need to, do we, I'm not sure we need to take a formal vote, but I'm, I'm interested because originally, Jim, you were on the side of in-person meetings. And then having thought more about it, you know, you saw a place for the hybrid, for the, for the virtual. And I, I appreciate that. I think that it indeed is true that we get participation from people that are in person and participation from people that are virtual. And those two things can both be served by having both kinds of meetings when it's appropriate. So, you know, I, I'd like to try that. I'm, I'm glad you do too. appropriate. So, you know, I, I'd like to try that. I'm glad you do too. And, you know, anyone can also jump in here, but I don't see any dissent from this. So I'm not sure we need a formal vote, but what we'll do then is we will advertise our March 8, 2022 meeting as being a Zoom slash virtual one. All right. Any other planning board director updates that we should deal with? All right. So onwards to board vote to authorize chair and vice chair to endorse A&amp;Rs on behalf of the planning board. Apparently the last vote that was taken named Kevin as chair and me as vice chair and Tina thought it would be good housekeeping to make a new vote with the correct names of me as chair and Mike as vice chair.
Even though I'm late.
Sounds good. So did I, did I present that?
I'm wondering, should we even, excuse me, should we even have names here? Should we just keep them as titles? Don't mean to impersonalize this, but.
I, I see the wheels turning.
Yeah.
Can I just add? We're only going to have to make the change every two years, so.
Yeah. Yeah. It would be good for two years and we don't have anybody, if, if either the, if the chair's missing, you sign.
Doesn't matter to me.
Yeah. And if there's no vice chair, there's just no vice chair. There's nobody else that would step in. So I think we'd be okay. Thank you though, Mike.
All right. So apparently there does need to be a vote. So if someone would like to make a motion, I would appreciate it.
So moved.
All right. There is a motion to authorize myself as chair and Mike Ventreska as vice chair to endorse A&amp;Rs on behalf of the planning board. Is there a second? For discussion by, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry? For discussion?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Well, there's a second by Kevin and then for discussion. Carolyn.
Just a procedural question. Do we need to withdraw the prior vote?
I don't, I don't know that we can because I actually send it to the registry of deeds. When we do it, I send it so that they know who's authorized to sign for the board.
Okay. So it's just a subsequent?
Yeah. So I don't think we'd withdraw.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'd be fine.
Because one would think, good question, one would think that when the registry receives another authorization with a date after, they would figure it out that the names have changed.
Right.
If all else fails, you'd go by the recording date.
Yeah, an amended vote.
Right. Right. And I guess I wonder though, Carolyn, good question, if in the vote itself, we set an expiration date?
It could.
Yeah, particularly if you chose something, well, we don't know the exact date of the next election of chair and vice chair as we sit here this evening.
Oh, well, good point. I, I don't think.
Yeah, I wondered if it could be that these two individuals are authorized to endorse A&amp;Rs on the board's behalf until the next regular election of chair and vice chair of the planning board.
Nice. Yeah, I do.
All right.
I do. All right. So that motion was made by Dave. Would you like to make that amended?
Okay.
Is now in the motion and Kevin, everything that, okay, good. And so we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any, excuse me, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, none opposed. That motion carries. Next on the agenda, approval of minutes of the February 8, 2022 virtual meeting. If everyone has it to look at. And anytime someone wishes to make a motion, they are welcome to do so.
I need to abstain if I was not here at that meeting. Much a great start this year.
Me also.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the February 8, 2022 meeting minutes.
All right. There is a motion by Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carolyn. Is there any further discussion? All right. There is a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the February 8, 2022 meeting as submitted. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four in favor, two abstaining, none opposed. That motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Is there any other business matters that may legally come before the board not known at the time of the posting? Tina?
Not from staff.
There is none. Well, left on the agenda is adjournment. Who would like to make that motion?
How about the last guy in?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:55.
7:55. Motion by Mike to adjourn at 7:55. Is there a second? Second by Jim. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, none opposed. That motion carries. Thank you very much.
See how much more fun this is in person.